I've got it's now five o'clock, so we'll call the meeting of June 17th, 2020 to order. First item on the agenda is to accept or modify the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. First thing on the consent agenda, well, we'll just go, do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Action agenda. Approval of change order 002 for replacement of membrane roof system and duck relocation for AS Rhodes Elementary School renovation project. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you. And I do not know why we have two zeros in front of the change order number because we're going to keep them as low as we can, so the number of change orders. On November 19th, 2019, the Warren County School Board approved awarding the AS Rhodes Elementary School renovation project to Lance Construction Company of Winchester. On May 19th, 2020, the Warren County School Board of Supervisors approved appropriating $1,076,200 to Warren County Public Schools from the 2018-2019 surplus for the completion of the renovation of AS Rhodes Elementary School. With additional funds available from the allocation of the 2018-19 surplus funds, we would like to recommend approval to authorize LCW to replace the existing flat roof system with a membrane roof system and relocate and resize existing deckwork at AS Rhodes Elementary School for the cost of $202,488. The cost to replace the flat roof system was part of the original bid, and LCW honored the original bid price. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I will say, I walked the school, was that a week ago we were there, Ms. Shepherd? And it was really moving along, and it makes sense to replace that, in my opinion, now, that flat roof and make the duck cuts, because if somebody else does it, if somebody else does the roof, then you end up, well, it's not my fault at least, it's their fault. So I think we'll work out to be in our favor in the end result. So, anything else? Yes.
Add appreciation once again to the board supervisors for allowing us the funds to do all of these things, and also a bit of appreciation to Lance for honoring their original bid, even though we put the project off for a while, they've honored the original bid.
I would move approval be given for the interim superintendent to sign change order 002 in the amount of $202,488 to authorize Lance Construction Company of Winchester Incorporated to reduce the existing flat roof, to replace the existing flat roof with a membrane roof system and relocate and resize existing deckwork at AS Rhodes Elementary School.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item, approval of change order 003 for casework and sinks for AS Rhodes Elementary School renovation project. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you. I'll skip the first paragraph because it's the same as the last agenda item. With the additional funds available from the allocation of the 2018-19 surplus funds, we would like to recommend approval to authorize LCW to provide and install casework and sinks for all, in all classrooms. The base bid included casework and sinks in rooms 107, 112, 114, 116, and 126. This request is to install casework for all other classrooms. The additional work was included in the original bid as alternate number two in the amount of $351,400. Since the casework was not included in the original contract, the contractor was not obligated to honor the original price. However, we were able to negotiate a minimal increase of $8,000 from the initial cost, which makes the total for the purchase and installation of the casework $359,400. And this agenda item came late this afternoon, so if you do not feel comfortable approving it today, we can do it at our July 1st meeting.
Ms. Shepherd.
Explain to everybody what casework means, just so everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, so casework is the shelving that would be on the, in the classroom, which would put, the students would put their backpacks and their book bags in and things like that. And then it also includes the sink in which kids would wash their hands and get water and those types of things. So currently, in the rooms other than the five listed here, we do not have that included in there, in the finished product. So, we wanted to do it. Unfortunately, we did not have enough money to be able to do the casework at the very beginning of the project, and that's why we kind of postponed that, hoping, postponed that, hoping that we would get the surplus funds in order to finish the project.
Okay. Questions?
How many classrooms does that include? I know there were five before the original contract.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Greg to see that question. He is, trying to think what he had.
Hear me, Melody?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. To answer that question, there are an additional seven classrooms that would receive that casework.
Thank you.
So is that complete?
Is that all?
Yes.
That's all?
So all of the classrooms would have casework and sinks.
Okay.
Correct.
Right back. Anything else? Mr. Lewis, Ms. Shepherd.
I move approval be given for the interim superintendent to sign change order number 003 in the amount of $359,400 to authorize Lance Construction of Winchester to provide and install casework and sinks at AS Rhodes Elementary School.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, approval of career technical education, equipment purchase in excess of $15,000. Ms. Baker.
Thank you. In early January, this calendar just kind of runs together, keep going, but in January I had the opportunity to apply for a grant that is used for innovative equipment that is not normally found in high school or technical center settings. And working with my teachers, looking at the courses that we wish to be bringing into the program, one of the items that we chose to focus on is a CNC machine. It is a complete package that includes the computer piece, training for two teachers, the entire bit router set and all of that. You will have the actual quote with the specifications there. We applied and were granted the grant. It actually totaled to a $37,500 grant, the remainder that will be used for our patient care and health and science courses that are there at the tech center. This piece of equipment will be used in conjunction with the project lead, the way engineering, of which this year we are bringing in architecture and civil engineering class and with our carpentry three program. Now that you all know what case goods are, the main piece of the carpentry three program is in fact cabinetry and the building of case goods. So this piece will definitely up the quality of the student that we are able to graduate from our programs. So, all financing is provided through the grant, there is no cost to the county, and I ask for your approval of use of these funds for that purchase.
Thank you. It's a great piece of equipment. I can't wait to see the students.
I'm thinking maybe some adult classes.
Yeah. Any questions for Ms. Baker?
I move that the purchase of the Alpha Gantry CNC system is by Lance through the CTE innovative innovative equipment grant be approved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next item is instructional technology coordinator position. Mr. Grant.
Good evening. The demands on the instructional technology support has increased since COVID-19, including the need for additional support for instruction with online learning initiatives. We anticipate this type of support will be a continued need for our teachers and students. The goal of the instructional technology coordinator is to work with our instructional technology, or with our instructional resource team to ensure that the instructional goals are closely aligned with the technology needs of the students and teachers. This position will also support the tech integration coaches by providing support and guidance to our teachers in regarding to technology integration in the classroom, and also this is a person that is going to lead the development and implementation of our virtual programs. The position is a 250-day teacher salary with a $5,000 stipend, and the funds are coming from the Title IV grant.
Will this person be working central office?
Yes.
Anything else for Mr. Grant?
For a motion. Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move that the position of instructional technology coordinator be approved pending the approval of the Title IV grant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Grant, you're still, technology purchases.
Okay, we're getting ready to purchase Chromebooks for the students. This will be for grades K through 12. We're looking at 1,400 Chromebooks, all elementary, middle school, and high school. It is on a state contract, and the amount for the 1,400 Chromebooks with the software and the, you know, the things to keep it going is $452,200, and we are using a little bit of the technology funds left over from this year, CARES grant funds, and then next year's technology fund, which is also supported by the Virginia School Public Authority grant as well. And I have a funny story, can I tell it? Okay, so, we have two, we have two Chromebooks we normally have, we use either Lenovo or Dell. Lenovos were slightly cheaper, so you may have seen like throughout the weekend that the prices changed and all that. Well, Florida this morning decided they were going to buy all of Lenovo's stock, so we actually wouldn't be able to get a Lenovo Chromebook until November, so we had to buy all Dell. So, if you go to Florida this summer, please, you know, let them know I'm not happy with them.
This will put us one to one?
Almost. About 2,000 would have done it, but we'll be short probably mostly, you know, the lower grade levels that we probably won't be using them much in the beginning of the year anyway, so.
Nathan.
I move approval be given to purchase Chromebooks in the amount not to exceed $452,200.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
Approval of authorization to continue contractual services with ESS Northeast LLC for substitute instructional and clerical staffing. Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon. In December 2015, Warren County Public Schools entered into an agreement with then Source for Teachers, now ESS Northeast LLC, for substitute instructional and clerical staffing. Throughout this time, ESS has served our division well. We wish to continue this relationship. The procurement for this agreement has been secured through a national cooperative agreement with ESS was awarded a five-year contract. Warren County Public Schools has secured approval to participate in this cooperative contract, allowing us to continue our substitute staffing services for an additional year, and we would also have the option for four additional one-year renewals. There are no changes to the current contracts, prices, or scope. So we're just getting the approval to continue with our program and start recruiting more substitutes.
I just had a thought. Now, we're doing a lot of virtual learning right now, and if a teacher's not able to do what she needs to do that day virtually, do subs take over, or is another teacher on that team taking over?
We have had subs during this last, this past spring serve as those, as those teachers.
And they felt comfortable doing that virtually?
I can't speak on their behalf of how comfortable they felt, other than the fact that they were able to do it. We have some teachers who were off on some, you know, their medical leave of some sort and those type of things, and we were, we did have subs able to come in, well, actually to do that, so.
I had a thought about that, just.
The supply of substitutes, a lot of times, kind of depends on the economy, to be honest with you. Normally, an economy that's not great produces a lot of positions that are filled, auxiliary type positions such as substitutes and those type of things when economies are strong. It's difficult to find substitutes because the demand or the supply for jobs are great. But we'd like just to continue to move forward so we can, plenty of us start recruiting a staff for this upcoming year, because honestly, we, we're not going to know how many are going to return until we start to move forward, because the majority of those subs, once we close the school and we work through the virtual process, pretty much will, without work during the time.
Right. Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Smith, we're not, are we obligated in any type of volume with ESS?
Volume as in?
As in, number of days we have to.
Minimum guarantee.
Agree for them to provide.
We pay them for the number of substitutes they provide, so we pay them.
So if we, if we use fewer substitutes.
Yeah, we're not charged, we're only charged for the substitutes that they actually put into the school. So if they're short 10 subs that day, then we don't, we don't pay for those 10 subs.
I was thinking more of if we do a half-virtual, half-live, and we end up not needing as many substitutes, we're not obligated to.
We're not, no, we're only obligated, we're only obligated for the subs that physically are doing the work.
There's no minimum guarantee that we will do, yeah.
We only pay if somebody.
That would be a whole lot simpler question.
Nothing else, sorry. All right, thank you, Mr. Wells.
I move that the Warren County School Board authorizes the interim superintendent to sign the ESS Northeast LLC agreement for substitute instructional and clerical staffing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Schedule physical year closeout meeting. Mr. Valentine.
Good evening. Well, the previous six items you have approved all dealt with spending money in one form or another, all for very good and necessary needs, but with that comes the need to pay a bill at some point. And what we want to do is particularly at the end of the year, pay those bills as promptly as we can, and at the end of the year, we want to pay all that are attributed to that year in that same year, and our fiscal year runs through June 30th. And we will receive bills between tonight and June 30th that we would like to pay before, pay on June 30th, so they get charged to this year's budget. And what we've done in the past, many years ago, you would hold what we called a closeout meeting on June 30th, where you would come and pretty much the only order of business would be to sit down and look at the list of bills to be paid and authorize that. The past several years, you have been willing to pass a resolution that allows us to do that, because state code and school board policy does allow for that, and in this case, if you do that, and it's certainly up to you whichever one you're most comfortable doing of those options, if you do that, we would present those bills to you then, in this case, the very next day, because your first meeting in the new fiscal year is actually New Year's Day, July 1st. So, it's, you know, sort of up to you folks if you'd rather gather on the 30th or the 29th at a particular time and approve those, you can, or if you'd like to pass a resolution that's been attached, a sample one, that would allow us to go ahead with the superintendent reviewing them and issuing them and then presenting them to you the very next day.
I'm down with the resolution. It's worth it, yes.
Well, it's good. Resolution. Okay, we have a motion.
I move that the resolution authorizing the interim superintendent to approve a final payment of bills for fiscal year 2020 be adopted as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you.
Selection of delegate and alternate delegate to the 2020 BSBA Annual Convention School Board. Well, Mr. Wells, oh, we've met our delegates. I don't know anybody else, though.
Yeah, we do it.
Virtual?
Virtual or live. I would deserve.
Hey, you can say you did it virtually. Who would like to be an alternate? Thank you, Ms. Bauer.
I was asking you, you would like to.
I think you actually attended it last year, didn't you? To observe.
And I have been, I've been there for, so I'd be happy to do it.
No good deed goes un.
That's right, that's right. All right, okay, so, Dr. Patsy, you do the motion.
I move that Mr. Jim Wells be selected as the delegate to the 2020 BSBA Annual Convention, and that Ms. Kathy Bauer be selected as the alternate delegate to the convention.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Personnel update. Mr. Smith.
Just wanted to briefly go over just a hiring update for this current start of the summer. I put together an information sheet here, a front and back sheet, and I'll go over both sides, just kind of outline where we have vacancies, where they appear, and where we still are looking to fill. The first side of the sheet itself identifies each of the schools on the left, and then I identified each school if there was a resignation of a licensed personnel staff and/or retirement. And your eyes can look down through the list, and sometimes you'll see a .5, and you may say, well, how can we have a .5 of a person, those type of things? Well, we, that's a split position. Perhaps we have, say, someone teaching social studies at one of the middle schools, and they're also going to the other middle school for, for part of the year as well, so they're, they're split. So, I didn't necessarily want to attribute that necessarily to one particular school in case someone comes back and says, hey, we share that person with the other school. So, those halves represent someone we share between, between two schools. One thing to, to notice really is, is the number of resignations and retirements. That's, that's down considerably from previous years. Now, we still have the summer left in front of us, and normally, at this point, our licensed staff is under contract for, for this upcoming school year. Sometimes circumstances may present themselves where that number could fluctuate slightly, but to be at 41 compared to a few years ago being at 72, and then years in between there of being in the 60s, this is a good way to start a game, okay? So, I feel good about that. Retirements, some years we go with a few retirements, and I think one year, I think we had 11, if I remember correctly. So, they also sort of fluctuate. So, seven, probably a little normal, it's within the range. If you look on the right-hand side of that first sheet, the remaining vacancies, you'll see the positions that we're still looking at filling, and some positions that you'll notice that are on hold, and I believe Ms. Shepherd, in a later presentation, may discuss a little bit about why certain positions may be on hold or those type of things, but this outlines at least the number of resignations, retirements, and the remaining vacancies that we're currently working on. So, we're looking at licensed personnel around 10 or so positions at this point, so honestly, I feel good about that. I feel good about that as in from years previous. Now, over on the backside, I just went ahead and put together the breakdown of the subject areas of which we lost personnel, and then I also broke it down into the level of which we, we lost those personnel. This year, we were hit actually very hard in special education. We lost 11 staff members, and I have it broken down that we lost five at the elementary level and five at the middle schools, and one at the high school. And then the elementary, 10 overall between all the elementary schools, and then just, you know, for your information, I also broke it down by grade level, just, so it's sort of spread out through there. Math, math's very difficult, special ed's very difficult to fill, math's very difficult to fill, science is very difficult to fill as well. There's one correction that I, I just noticed, is if you look at biology, okay, it says one at middle school, well, that's one at high school, okay? Biology is, if I remember correctly, a 10th grade year, and that biology position is at the high school, but everything else appears to be correct. We still continue to work through some, some creative ways of recruiting. All job fairs were pretty much canceled. Virtual, we did some stuff with some universities with some virtual recruiting. We were able to receive from some of the job fairs that were canceled, a list of candidates and their contact information. That was extremely helpful. We simply then just started emailing, calling, and those type of things, sending out our information, so we were able to pick up some, some, some new hires that way, and we'll continue to use that model until we get the positions themselves filled. Sometimes we get creative within the, the building itself of, perhaps you have a teacher who has a certification in something outside of that subject area that they're teaching, and so far, we have found a few teachers who had said, you know, I'd like to teach that science class this year. I've always sort of kind of wanted to teach history and those type of things. And sometimes by doing that, you can create, you can eliminate that hard-to-fill area like a math. Someone said, I'd like to teach math this year, have the math endorsement, but their position was, say, social studies, or something that there may be more of abundance of applications out in as compared to math. So, just in summary, 41 total vacancies, 34 resignations, seven retirements, roughly down to about 10, 10 fills left, with some positions just currently on hold.
So there's, I'll just go ahead and talk about those positions that are on hold. We are uncertain about next year's budget based on our sales tax revenue, our lottery funds, and actually, our ADM, our average daily membership for students, we do not know, we have 5,220 students. We hope that all 5,220 students return, but if that's not the case, then, you know, our funding is affected by that. So, we hope to have more than 5,220 students. So we have actually looked at each of the positions that have, that are vacant and have put a few of them on hold. They're still much-needed positions, but they're positions that we feel like we can start the school year without until we have a better understanding of what, where our budgets. our budget's going to be. And we just received April sales tax revenue, and it was 10.5% less than we anticipated, is that correct?
10.5% less than the prior year.
Prior year, so, so, yeah, we just, we just need to be careful with our, with our spending over the next few months until we know what the impact's going to be. So it's not that any of these positions are any less important than others, but we do, we need to watch out for them.
All right. We're, we're also, thank you, Ms. Shepherd, we're also conducting exit interviews of the people who leave, so therefore, we're going through that process now, and that's something that's been challenging with our current situation, but once we, once we are back in the fall and those type of things, I normally give a presentation of sort of a recap of the summer hiring, so I'll have some of that data and information for you. Then I'll, I'll compile some information of reasons why people say that they leave and those type of things, but I need, at this time, I just need to continue to, to get those documents in.
Could you include, Mr. Smith, when you do that, in the resignations, the years of service?
Sure.
Did those three-year teachers, you know, we've been trying to hit that sweet spot, or we're making any progress there?
Sure, I can provide, I can provide that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Warren County High School exemplar school recognition program. Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you. So this is just in, the Virginia Board of Education selected Warren County High School to receive the 2020 Virginia Board of Education's exemplar awards through the exemplar school recognition program. Warren County High School will be awarded the Continuous Improvement exemplar award for the improvement in, for their improvement in chronic absenteeism as determined by the data from the 2018-19 school year. Warren County High School will be recognized by the Virginia Board of Education at the June 18th meeting, and I would like to congratulate Warren County High School on their accomplishment and continued dedication to our students, so very excited about that.
Absolutely. Very nice, very nice. Second reading and discussion, May 2020, BSBA School Board Policy Update. Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you. In May 2020, BSBA submitted 39 policies for consideration by the Warren County School Board. A chart showing the updated policies has been prepared by staff members noting the proposed changes. An additional seven policies are presented for review but have no recommended revisions. The first reading of the proposed changes was at the last school board meeting. At tonight's work session, we will have an opportunity to discuss the recommended changes for consideration. Final approval of the changes will be requested at the July 1st meeting. We have you to answer any questions, and I think we have a lot of our staff here to-
Do you have any questions? Ms. Shepherd? No questions tonight?
All right.
All right. Discussion of 2020, 2021 school year. Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you. So on Tuesday last week, we received the Virginia Department of Education's comprehensive plan, recover, redesign, and restart. Our leadership team has been working through the document and planning for the reopening of school. There are currently three phases, and we were in phase one at the beginning, at the end of the fourth quarter when we closed school, March the 13th. We are currently in phase two, which is virtual learning for most students K through three, pre-K through three, English learners, and special students with disabilities are eligible for in-person instruction. So for phase two, for this summer, we are planning on offering virtual remediation in math and reading for the, at the elementary level. Parents can elect their students, elect to have their students participate in one or all of the courses. At the middle school, we will be starting a virtual summer school in the next few weeks, and then at high school, at both high schools, we have already started a credit recovery program, so our, our summer school programs are, are either gearing up or already, already started, and they will all be virtual. So phase three is the phase which we anticipate we will start the next school year, and phase three requires six-foot physical distancing, and it also requires physical distancing on the buses, which is going to be problematic. Our buses are really going to drive, our buses and our classroom space is really going to drive how we do school next year. So we are planning, we are currently in the planning phase for starting school in this fall, and the way we return to school will determine which phase we're in according to the governor's order. Our bus transportation, Mr. Mitchell has put together several scenarios on the number of students we can transport daily, and we are working on a healthcare plan, which includes disinfection protocols and increased cleaning both on the school, both in the schools and on the school buses. We are working with our local health department on our plan for reopening school. As soon as all the details are worked out, we will submit our plan to the Virginia Department of Education. Our plan is to offer as much in-person instruction as possible, however, we know that our buildings and our transportation are not going to allow us to, allow us to have all students in the building at, at one time. We will be offering virtual learning as well as in-person instruction, and we will be offering virtual learning for all students, grades K through 12, who students, whose parents are not comfortable sending their children back to school. We have also looked at the school calendar, we are looking at the school calendar to determine if there is a change that we need to make in our school calendar. At this point, we still anticipate we're going, going to start August the 11th, but there may be some changes after August the 11th. There has been some discussion that there will be a resurgence in October, and what's that going to look like, so we are also, we are prepared to move to virtual instruction if we need to, so we are preparing to move to virtual instruction if we need to, so. So we are still right in the infancy stage of, of preparing our return to school, but we are working diligently to make sure that it's going to be as smooth as possible. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you get any feedback, or has Mr. Mitchell heard anything about, I mean, we were talking about, you know, the smaller children being on the bus, you can't even see the top of their heads, so does that make them safer in this scenario?
At one point, the guidance was that we would have to leave a seat between each student on the school bus, which really took our 77-passenger buses from 77 students down to 12 or 15, so it was, you know, it really limited the number of students that we could transport. The, the new, if we have mitigating strategies in place, then we're going to be able to put one student in each seat, so that, you know, that increases our, our bus transportation significantly. What we have worked out is that we could transport three elementary schools at one time, we can transport our high schools in, at two separate, two separate sections. We are also looking instead of a six-and-a-half-hour day at going to around a five-hour day, so, you know, none of this is set, set in stone at this point, but these are some of the things that we're considering. Also, our, our bus drivers, most of our bus drivers are currently four-and-a-half hours, we will be asking them to work a much longer day, so the care slots that we have received, we will likely have to spend some of that with our bus, paying our bus drivers. And, you know, we ask, we have asked our bus drivers to do a lot for us the last quarter of the school year and this summer with our feeding program, and we are really asking them to do a lot for us this coming fall, and hopefully, we'll be able to return to normal soon, but, so we really owe them a debt of gratitude for the amount of, of work that they've, that they're doing for us, and, and happy to do it for us.
I have to say thank you for everything, everyone is going to try to figure this out, and the word chaos probably doesn't even compute. Our children, they, they need to be at school, especially the younger ones, they need the hands-on instruction, they need compassion of the teachers, they need the meals, they need the therapies that many of them require, and I just, I was going to work, it's scary now.
Our, our goal is to make sure that our pre-K through, pre-three get to school as, as frequently as possible, so, you know, that's our primary goal, and then secondary, maybe not, not as much, which is unfortunate.
It is, I mean, some kids do well virtually, but a lot of them need kind of classroom instruction.
And we have some places in our community that do not have really good internet connectivity.
Is there any way that in some of our schools, like we have auxiliary gyms, or just these areas that aren't really used every day, and you have this six-foot space that we could set it up as a classroom, and maybe, maybe it's big enough to fit two classes, I don't know.
Yeah, we are planning on using every available space that we have.
Just, how do we move everybody's jungle? I know it's a huge job.
Even, even the, so the auxiliary gyms, the gyms, the cafeteria, the dining rooms, yes, we're, we're planning on using them as classrooms as well, libraries, so there will not be a space in the building that likely does not have kids in them, except for maybe our hallways where we need kids to move between classrooms, so.
Right, okay.
So we're, we're working on, you know, do we have lunch in the cafeteria, or is it in the classroom? Do we have breakfast in the cafeteria, or is it in the classroom? So it really is going through all of the scenarios to make sure that we have everything that we need to do in order to, to make sure that our students are safe and they're educated.
But you still got to get them to the building.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's-
That's going to be the, that's going to be the hardest part. What about some parents, some people in my neighborhood have called me about this, and I tell them, hey, it's all up in the air right now, but we're planning for everything. But one of them mentioned carpooling, and at first, my response was, yeah, that'll work, but then you got two or three kids in the car and you don't have the distance. So I said, well, I think if parents want to bring their kids to school, I mean, that would really help, so I don't know if there's some way to figure out how many of them would happen. And then at the high school, I'm sure a bunch of them are driving in anyway, so.
That would, it would help if our, if our parents could bring their students to school. The way we have figured our, our transportation schedule is based on the number of students who were, rode our school transportation last year, so, so we, we have planned for the number of students that we transported last year. So eight to one, we may have three, three elementary schools going to school, nine to two, we may have two elementary schools going to school, and then 10 to three, we may have a secondary, a couple of our secondaries going to school, so that's, you know, that's kind of the plan we're working through.
Tough one. I'd hate to be errant.
It's going to be tough on everybody.
Yes.
With that type of schedule, I mean, from the children to the bus drivers to the parents, it's just tough.
Like I said, we have, nothing is set in stone, we still have, it's thundering outside, so we're getting a little, so our electronics go down, but nothing is set in stone, so we really need to, you know, we need to, to start putting some things into place and writing, but we need to make sure that we have everything figured out before we start finalizing the-
You've got to have a plan, but the plan's going to be so fluid that-
And then we're going to have to remain through, remain fluid throughout the year-
Yes.
Because we do not know if, you know, if we'll end up back in phase one in October, or whether we'll, you know, be in a different phase, so hopefully, it's phase five, which I don't know if that exists, so.
Hope that thing is back to normal.
Yes.
That's what I hope. All right, anything else for Ms. Shepherd on that?
Just, just to, I know we're looking at all the options and all the possibilities, I just wonder if, if a decision is made that perhaps the, maybe the middle school age or something like that are able to do virtual, is there any thought to utilizing this building and Warren County Middle School as an elementary school because of larger size, more classrooms that they can move those students around and that type of thing?
Yes. And we've actually proposed moving a couple of classes up to the middle and high school level at this time, so that's part of our plan.
Anything else for Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you.
Brother D. All right. BSBA School Legislative Advocacy Conference, Thursday, September 24th, 2020, and of course, it's virtual, so anybody interested, sign up. All right, that's all we have on our regular agenda. We're going to go into a closed meeting. This motion is made to disable the public meeting of the Warren County School Board becoming closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. The school board desires to discuss the following matter in closed meeting, Section 2.2-3711A, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, employment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, and resignation of employees of the school board, specifically the superintendents. Can you have a second?
Second.
Could we do a roll call, Mr. Ballantyne?
Certainly. Mrs. Bauer?
Aye.
Dr. Pence?
Aye.
Mr. Rinaldi?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. We are now in closed session.